I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Here.
Hostchild?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Boucher?
Here. Announcements? Do any counselors have announcements this evening?
Just maybe the, um, an announcement about the trail opening next week Tuesday at 5:00 PM. We're excited to see the community there for the grand opening of the Boulder Trail and we'll have food trucks and camaraderie and community gathering. It'll be a nice event.
And that's regardless of weather?
Yes, rain or shine this time.
And Mr. Mayor, with you back in town, you get handed back the, uh, privilege of, uh,
And thank you.
Doing this, for doing the public speaking.
I do have a regular announcement I like to make about public discussion. When we have public hearings as attached to our agenda, there is a period of discussion for that item. There is a period of general public discussion that happens at the beginning of our meeting that is for items not on the agenda. And we will have a period of discussion for anything on the agenda during the discussion and consideration of that item. So I just wanted to make that clear if anybody is contemplating public discussion to try and tailor it to the right time. Mr. Mulder, uh, communications, please.
Um, a number of those communications are relative to, um, some, um, failed compliance check on alcohol and tobacco. Um, so this process is we notify, um, you of those, um, situations. We then notify, um, the, um, parties that, um, failed to comply. Um, they'll be given an administrative fine, but they can reduce that if they go through some training so that we will, um, be not sending out those notices this week.
Thank you. No presentations for this meeting, and now we have the time for general public, public discussion. This is the time that individuals can address the council about any item not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. We'll start, uh, with chambers. Is there anyone in chambers that wishes to speak under general public discussion? Hearing and seeing none, is there anyone present at the online meeting that wishes to address the council about general public discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Joe. I don't believe there is.
Thank you. Um, with no public discussion, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Hostchild, second by Counselor Geisler. Roll call, please.
Counselor Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. There are no motions on tonight's agenda. Next is ordinances. We have a second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero seven. An ordinance amending section eight twenty of the Hermantown City Code by amending the city of Hermantown snowmobile and ATV map. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll move to, uh, approve that amendment.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Mulder, do you have an explanation of this?
So basically this is allowing ATV use east of Stebner, um, uh, on the map. There was a, um, for a while there, we did not have it east of Stebner, but now we are, um, including that area east of Stebner specifically in the area of, um, north of Maple Grove and south of Arrowhead.
Thank you.
And it's snowmobile and ATV.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Any other, any questions or comments from council?
I'll just comment that this came at the request of a few of the citizens in the, uh, at the look at the Adrian Terrace Drive neighborhood. And I thank the city staff for, uh, listening to the request and making the change.
Thank you. Anything else from council? And that, uh, basically in the snowmobile end will allow them access to trails that they otherwise couldn't directly from their home.
Correct.
Thank you. Is there any public discussion on this ordinance? If there is, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Or if you are present online, please start with your name and address. Is there any public discussion for ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero seven? Hearing none, could we have a roll call?
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. The next is ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero eight. An ordinance amending Hermantown zoning code by amending chapter eleven planned unit development. This is a first reading. There is no action taken tonight, therefore no public discussion. So we will commence with the agenda. To resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one oh one. Resolution awarding contract for a power broom attachment to Minnesota Equipment Incorporated in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred fifty dollars plus applicable taxes and fees. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Hostchild. Mr. Mulder?
So this will be a power broom that will add to our right of way mower so that we can, um, uh, sweep snow off of the paved trails.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I, I just want to say that I think this is a really good idea. I know it wasn't originally budgeted, but, um, I've heard from several citizens talking about or asking if it would be paved during the winter, and I think people will be excited to see the city kind of take this step and provide the service, so.
And it was, uh, recommended by the park board to do this and to keep the trails clear during the winter. The plan is to remove large amounts of snow with present equipment that the city has, but this would allow for brushing to create a better surface. Any other questions or comments? Is there any public discussion or public input on this matter? Either present in the chambers or online? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero one? If there's no public input, could we have a roll call?
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero two. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute a termination of special use permit between the city and David Colquist.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Counselor Hostchild, second. By Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
Uh, maybe, uh, community development director Eric Johnson.
Mr. Johnson.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, city council recalls approximately two meetings ago. Uh, we had taken action on the, uh, consent to assign a special use permit to the new owners of the Golden Oaks facility located on Ranky Road. The council did approve that, um, consent of assignment in that document then was presented to Saint Louis County Recording Office. Unfortunately, at their end, Saint Louis County rejected that consent to assign the special use permit. Uh, the problem was that, uh, the original owner, David Colquist, uh, they could not locate him anymore. Uh, they could not have any agreements associated with this. So staff has discussed this quite a bit, uh, with also the new purchasers attorneys. And we believe that, uh, in lieu of the special use permit that we actually utilize a zoning certificate that will put stipulations on this facility, i.e. uh, how many beds this could be used, uh, could have at this facility as well as any future uses associated with this property. So any future uses have to conform within the R three zoning district. So the zoning certificate will then take a place of the special use permit and it will be recorded with Saint Louis County at that point.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? With no input from council, is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero two? With no public input, I'd ask for a roll call.
Counselor Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero three. Resolution approving a special use permit for the construction of a two-family home in an R three residential zoning district. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Hostchild. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Johnson address this?
Yes, please.
Great, thank you again. This is a five point six two acre property located at fifty-one oh six Hermantown Road. There's an existing home along with two outbuildings currently on this property. Uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. Russ Bradley is in the process of finalizing his purchase of this property from, uh, Clear Vision Builders for the purpose of, uh, subdividing this property into one acre lot for the purposes of, uh, building a two-family residential structure on that. Uh, the, uh, the new property owner is going to continue to utilize that existing home in those two storage buildings as one lot. So, uh, this does not present any conflicts that way. So what is before us is a, a two-family structure on a one acre lot. Uh, this is, the structure is perpendicular to, um, Hermantown Road. This did go through planning commission. Uh, there was a zone, there was a variance request at that time for a six foot rear yard setback. Uh, the, um, applicant, uh, was looking at some grading issues associated with the site. It's approximately twelve to fourteen feet of, um, grade change across the site, which was, uh, making it difficult him for to locate that structure. Uh, planning and zoning did approve that uh, variance and they recommended the two-family structure onto city council.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero three? With no public input, could we have a roll call?
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero four. Resolution declaring cost to be assessed and ordered, ordering preparation of two thousand twenty-one assessment role for the construction of twenty twenty-one and road improvement district number five thirty-six, Sunbee Road and Swan Lake Road. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Hostchild, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Mulder?
So this is, uh, just another step in our road improvement, uh, process where, um, we have the, the council asked the staff to prepare that assessment role and then we set up that public hearing. So this is the, um, the preparation of the assessment role.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero two? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero five. Resolution receiving proposed assessment role for the construction of twenty-one, twenty-one road improvement district number five thirty-six, Sunbee Road and Swan Lake Road and ordering hearing thereon. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson and a tie, so we'll give that one to Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
So you asked us to prepare the assessment role in the last resolution. Here is the proposed assessment role.
That was fast.
Yes, um, very efficient. Um, and then this calls the, for the public hearing. So that public hearing will be on October eighth, at six thirty.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Sorry, eighteenth. Um, and then we'll send out notices, um, next week to the affected property owners. And we'll also have, um, it published in the Star, um, twice prior to the hearing. So, um, this will then, you know, invite everybody to that public hearing, um, for that road project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please start with your name and address. Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero five? Roll call, please.
Counselor Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero six. Resolution declaring cost to be assessed and ordering preparation of assessment role for the construction of road improvement district number five thirty-seven, Leveque Junction Road. Do we have an, uh, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Mulder?
So this is the same thing, um, as we just did for Sunbee and Swan Lake, but this is for Leveque Junction. Um, just a little bit more information on this is that, um, on our road projects, we're having an assessment of ninety-seven fifty regardless of what the entire project costs. The city is covering all the other costs. Okay, most of the time on a project, uh, assessment project, we, we add up all the costs and we assess the entire cost. But so that's why we normally have that, we had declared the cost and then we developed the assessment role. But because we know that the assessment is going to be ninety-seven fifty, that's why we can do it kind of right back to back like this. So this is for Leveque Junction.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, I just comment, um, I, I've driven, uh, the new road while it's not quite done. It's, it's great. Thank to engineer both and the city staff for all of the hard work. There was, uh, lots of work before there was ever lines on a paper and I think, uh, been a successful project uh, because of all the efforts by the city engineer and the staff. So thank you, David and everyone for that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there any public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero six? If so, state your name and address for the record. Any public input on twenty twenty-one dash one zero six for the Leveque Junction Road? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild? Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero seven. Resolution receiving proposed assessment role for the construction of road improvement district number five thirty-seven, Leveque Junction Road and ordering a hearing thereon. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Hostchild, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Mulder?
Again, the same situation here is that this is the assessment role for Leveque Junction. We're assessing each parcel ninety-seven fifty. Um, and the city will, um, be covering, uh, the rest of those costs with other funds. Um, again, that hearing will be on October eighteenth at six thirty. We'll do the public notices in the paper and a notice to the residents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero seven? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild? Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero eight. Resolution approving the environmental covenant and easement. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Hostchild. Mr. Mulder?
So previously you had approved this environmental covenant for the vapor mitigation, uh, system at the essential wellness center. As we were processing that paperwork, um, there was ongoing discussion with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and they had, uh, some suggested, uh, changes that they wanted to the covenant. So we've made those changes and are representing that to you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero eight? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on this resolution? Roll call, please.
Counselor Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero nine. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor to sign capacity allocation permit reissuance between the city of Hermantown and Western Superior Lake Superior Sanitary District. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
So this is renewing the permit with WLSD for, um, um, permitting, um, the amount of sewers that we can provide to them. And so it's for a five-year period from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six. They increased the, uh, total allowed peak flow, um, just by three hundred thousand gallons a day. Um, so again, kind of in keeping with some of the growth we've seen as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one zero nine? If so, please start with your name and address. Any public input on two thousand twenty-one dash one zero nine? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild? Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one ten. Resolution approving pay request number thirteen for sewer improvement district number four four eight to Utility Systems of America Incorporated in the amount of thirty-six thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Hostchild, second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
So this is for the work done in the last month for thirty-six thousand dollars. We still, um, are withholding, uh, the retained amount of two hundred and six thousand dollars.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address. Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one eleven? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one eleven. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute addendum number two to engineering contract for road improvement district number five thirty-four, Hugstead Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Mulder, should we ask our city engineer to address this?
Sure, since he's staying with the meeting and all.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, mayor and, and city council. Um, so thi- this resolution is for the work um, related to our federal aid project, the reconstruction of Hugstead Road. As part of the design of that, we, uh, need to prepare a project memorandum, which is uh, it's just a narrative of what we're doing and how we're planning to spend the money. And on part of that process, there's an environmental review that MINDOT does and they have identified three properties that have the potential to have, um, some contaminated, um, material. So this resolution is authorizing our consultant, um, MSA to do that engineering, that testing prior to, um, us doing the road construction. So we, what we will do with this is they'll do some testing and then that will satisfy the requirements of the project memorandum. And if we have any, um, material that has migrated into the road, then we will deal with that as part of the construction project. So this is a requirement for the federal aid process to, to move forward.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on two thousand twenty-one dash one eleven? If so, please state your name and address. Is there any public input on two thousand twenty-one dash one eleven? Roll call, please.
Counselor Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one twelve. Resolution approving pay request number five for road improvement district number five thirty-seven, Leveque Junction Road to Yulin Brothers Incorporated in the amount of three hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Hostchild, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Mulder?
So this is the pay request for the work that was been done on Leveque Junction over the last month.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one twelve? If so, state your name and address. Is there any public input on this resolution? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one thirteen. Resolution accepting quote from Northwood Sodding Incorporated for repairs on Rose Road Field number three in the amount of thirty thousand six hundred fifty dollars plus water. Motion, uh, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Hostchild. Mr. Mulder, uh, do we want Mr. Johnson to?
Yes, please.
Eric, could you explain this?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, the proposal before us this evening is to remove the existing, uh, grass that's out on field three in the outfield area. Uh, that had been seeded originally in two thousand eighteen as well as other seeding operations the last two years. Uh, we've only have about a seventy-five percent coverage rate on that field. There are significant bear spots throughout the outfield as well as, uh, different tufting of the grasses, which, uh, could create some issues, uh, with, uh, the ball jumping and such that way. Um, staff has looked at this quite a bit, also discussing this with, uh, public works director and, um, as well as the park board. Uh, staff reached out to four local, uh, landscaping companies to solicit bids to correct this work. Uh, we received three bids back. Um, of these three bids, two of them were able to conduct the work this spring, excuse me, this fall. However, uh, one was extremely, it was much higher than the other two. In the, the initial other bid, uh, they could not guarantee a source of water. They could get the sodding done, but they could not guarantee how that, that sod would be watered this year. And that was a very large concern here for the staff standpoint. Uh, that contractor recommended potential irrigation system with it. But, uh, there's too many unknowns associated with that, um, with the water supply out on that site. So what staff is recommending is a, a contract with, uh, Northwood Sodding. They'll be able to do this work next spring. Uh, looking at potentially, uh, first or second week of May, projecting about three or four weeks to a playability surface at that point. Uh, what they would be doing is installing an athletic blend of turf. It's a mineral-based turf. Uh, it works a little bit better than a peat-based, uh, sodding. Doesn't dry out as quickly. The main, uh, advantage to this quote is this contractor has two watering trucks. They're able to provide those watering trucks along with the labor to conduct that watering. Uh, what the city would do is work with that, um, that uh, person to provide the source of water and then they would u- utilize their staff and time to water.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
I, I would just say I'm, I'm glad that this is getting worked on by staff. I think Hermantown is known as a recreational uh, community and youth sports is what draws a lot of families here. But I think that only goes as far as supporting all youth sports, not just hockey or soccer, which maybe a lot of people hear about. So I'm just glad that we're, uh, hopefully moving forward to address this and make sure that our youth sports have, um, have the fields that they need to practice. So thanks for the work.
Any other comments from council? Uh, I did have a, a question for Mr. Johnson. You mentioned the difference in sod product and watering ability. Was that the reason for choosing this contractor over the, a lower bid?
That is correct, yes. Is, uh, primarily is that source of water is that, uh, uh, initial contractor who was lower and could duck the work this fall. Uh, they would put the watering a hundred percent onto the city. Uh they would put the watering a hundred percent onto the city. Um public works director has looked for a watering truck, and he's not been able to locate one anywhere in the Midwest. And so because of that, with this large investment in the sod, we were more comfortable going with a little bit higher bid, knowing we'd have that guaranteed source of watering.
And and the product was different?
That is correct as well. The original one, the lower bid was a bluegrass. Uh this one is for a um, it's an athletic blend. It's the same Type of turf that's been used over at the uh Hermantown Football Complex.
Thank you. Anything else from counsel? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one thirteen? If so, please s- state your name and address for the record. You can step to, if you're in the room, please step to the podium. Any questions from counsel?
You feel like the process has gone well, and you're excited about the prospects of this? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Is there any other public input on this resolution? If so, state your name and address. Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-one dash one one three? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Hostchild.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. That ends most of our agenda. We now have an agenda item to move into closed session. Do we need a motion for that, Mr. Overham?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
We should move to closed session.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Nelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
I thought just for ease, we would move into the large conference room.